I will jump ahead because we'll, we'll get to board announcements momentarily. But I did hear from Aleah yesterday that she had something come up and it is unlikely that she will be attending today, which is too bad because this was her last meeting. But she said she'd try to pop in if she could, but you know, not to get our hopes up. Okay, Tammy, good morning.
Morning, everyone.
So I now see six of us, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is eight thirty-three Wednesday, June twelfth. This is the State Board of Education monthly meeting. So Maureen, if I could have you start with roll call.
Sure, good morning, everyone. Mohammed Jobe. Tom Lovett.
Here.
And Mohammed's here as well, okay. Jenna, Jenna O'Farrell.
Good morning. Here.
Lyle Jepson.
Here, here.
Kimberly Gleason.
Good morning. Yeah.
Tammy Colby.
Good morning, everyone.
Richard Werner. Aleah Wilburn. Greg Feron.
I'm here.
Zoe Saunders.
Here.
And Jer Samson.
Here, good morning, thank you, Maureen.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? If so, if you're joining us on the Teams platform, you can raise, you know, press the hand icon to raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star five to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone. All right, well, we will leave this open, but in the meantime, I'm going to move on to our next agenda item because we're on a little bit of a timeline. We've got our finalists for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching, and I, I've seen a couple and I'm just wondering, I see Kathy. I just want to make sure that the people who are coming are actually here. I see Kathy, I don't know, Joanne and Alyssa, if you guys are here?
I don't see them here.
Okay, do we know, were they planning to come?
Alyssa's not able to come, and I don't believe I heard back from Joanne.
Okay. Okay, is Kate here?
I'm not seeing Kate here either.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and get started. I'm glad we've got Kathy with us. So this is the, what I'm going to share with the board is taken from the P A E M S T website. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K to twelve science, I'm sorry, K to twelve science, technology, engineering, and mathematics teaching. The awards were established by Congress in nineteen eighty-three and allow the president to recognize a total of one hundred and ten exemplary teachers each year, demonstrate both deep content knowledge of the subjects that they teach, and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. Since the program's inception, more than five thousand two hundred teachers have been recognized for their contributions in the classroom and to their profession. Awardees reflect the expertise and dedication of the nation's teaching corps, and they demonstrate the positive impact of excellent teachers on student achievement. Candidates are evaluated based upon their demonstration of deep content knowledge, exemplary pedagogical skills, student assessment expertise, reflective teaching, and leadership that results in improved student learning. Anyone, principals, parents, students, or members of the general public may nominate exceptional teachers, and the awards alternate between K to six teachers one year and seventh to twelfth grade teachers the next. State finalists are selected by a committee that includes prominent mathematicians, scientists, education researchers, district-level personnel, and classroom teachers. From there, the finalist names will be forwarded to the National Selection Committee, who will make the final decision. Award recipients receive, among other things, a ten thousand dollar award from the National Science Foundation, an all-expenses-paid trip to the award ceremony, and increased networking abilities with other recipients and policymakers to continue improving science, technology, engineering, and mathematics education. It's a big deal. So we were notified of our three finalists this year by Kate McCann, who was a Vermont Teacher of the Year of two thousand seventeen. She also received the Presidential Award for Excellence in Teaching Math and Science in two thousand fifteen, and she is also the P A E M S T State Coordinator for Math. So it looks like we've got Kathy with us today, and Kathy, I, I would love to, you know, hear from you, and if you can share with the board what you're doing, and just what, what brought you here today.
Wow, thank you for having me here. This is quite an honor, receiving this award, and I've been in education now, this is my twenty-ninth year, and I started off actually hating math. I never liked math growing up, and I was kind of put into that direction, and after several, several trainings and years, I've become to love math, and that's one of the things that I always tell my students to, you know, I get it, I understand how you feel, we can do this, you know, so it's almost an immediate connection for me to make with some of the kiddos that I have in my classroom. Currently, I teach grades three, four, and I do math and science, and I just, I just love it, you know. The kids have changed quite a bit since I started teaching in, what was it, nineteen ninety-four? And times have definitely changed, but, you know, I like keeping things fresh, change is good. I just, I've, I am teaching classes to other teachers now to help them understand, like, progressions of math and how they work, because it's so important that they know at least three grade levels below and three grade levels above what you teach, so that you can better prepare students. But I'm all for kids teaching each other, too, because I've found that, you know, yeah, I'm great, but they really learn best from each other, and the many different methods and strategies and tools that they use, I try and have them find what fits best for them, because I find like, it's a big old puzzle, and they just need to see what fits best. As long as we get to the correct answer at the end, that's what counts. So, but thank you for having me here today.
Sure, well, thank you for coming. So have you always, you know, over the course of your teaching career, have you always been like an elementary school teacher, or have you switched around?
Yes, that, I've always, always remained an elementary school teacher. I have taught all the grade levels, and I do prefer the upper grades. Four and fifth grade are definitely my favorite. I'm beginning to appreciate my third graders more, but they come in, they're almost like second graders at the beginning of the year, well, they kind of are, but I just, I enjoy the upper grades. Kindergarten was really not for me, they're too hands-on, touchy-feely, but yeah, I've always been in elementary school and have, I, I still want to remain here, too. I don't think I would want to go into the middle school, because that's when their hormones start, I mean, they're like raging, and they change.
So, and Kathy, where does it go from here? I know you go before the national panel that makes the final decision, but do you have a sense of the timeline of that?
Well, it was funny, because when I was talking to Kate McCann, she was saying it could take up to two years, because they're kind of backlog right now. So, yeah, I was like, really, two years? And she said, yep, just be patient, and she said I might have to resubmit my application again, even though I am the finalist for Vermont, and I should be the one that's going, I still have to wait for them to approve me. So I really don't know what the timeline is for them to notify me of, you know, anything else, but she said it could take up to two years.
Okay, oh, and I do see that Kate is now with us, good morning, Kate. Board members, any questions, comments? Tammy and Kim.
Of course, I just want to say thank you for all that you do, and I just want to point out and remind everyone that it's particularly important that the work you do in the elementary grades, we know from the research that interest in science starts early, and having access to high-quality science instruction in elementary grades is so critical, particularly third and fourth and fifth graders. So the work you do is, is important and impactful, and not just because of who you are, but also because of who you teach, and so it's very much appreciated, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Kim?
And I will echo the thanks, so grateful for educators and the creative ways of finding the opportunities to meet students where they are, and I loved your expression of the, how they get there is a puzzle, and thank you for guiding that for them, it's terrific. I have subbed a bit and can, can say there's nothing quite like having done that to fully appreciate our educators, despite having had four kids go through our schools. Subbing is a whole nother world, and we are incredibly grateful for our educators, thank you.
Thank you.
So I also see we have Catherine Rossman with us, who's also on, I believe, the, the panel representing the Agency of Education. Catherine, I don't know if you want to pop in?
I do, I want to make sure we're finished with Kathy first, so I just wanted to, in lieu of, or with, sorry, let me back that up, with Alyssa and Joanne not being able to make this meeting, I wanted to just read a quick snippet about each of them to introduce them, but I want to make sure we're all set, applauding Kathy and her accomplishments.
Okay, so we'll come back to you in a minute.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, so I see Jenna and it might have been someone else, oh, no, just Jenna.
Just me, thank you, I wanted to thank Kathy as well for staying in the field for this many years, and that is an accomplishment, and also as a math teacher, I wonder how many math programs that were introduced over those years, and how many times you had to change your curriculum.
There have been quite a few different math programs that I've tried out over the years, and I had the privilege of working with Mahash Sharma a few years, and we actually came up with our own curriculum when I was working at Williamstown Elementary School, and so we actually designed the curriculum to fit our elementary school, and I wrote lesson plans, detailed lesson plans, materials, how they align with Common Core, for every single day of the year for grades three, four, and five, and that was quite an undertaking, but it worked really well, and we had some good results, and, you know, we did switch over to, we are now doing currently the iReady program, which seems to be, um, I don't know, it's kind of close to what we were doing when we designed it, but the new teachers really liked the books, and that's what they wanted more, whereas when we designed the curriculum, we didn't really have books, and so, yeah, it, I think it makes it a little bit easier for newer teachers coming in, but, yeah, and I definitely use a lot of my own, uh, skill builders, I call them, routines, to help keep the kids practicing what they need to practice, because you can't just teach them something and then leave it, as you well know.
Thank you.
Zoe?
Kathy, it's good to see you again, I just wanted, on behalf of the Agency of Education, to publicly thank you for your contributions and dedication to teaching our students, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll just pop in with a personal anecdote, one of, one of my children really, really, really struggled with math, she's now a nurse, which, you know, requires math if nothing else, but I think hearing your story about how you hated math and you're now a math teacher, I think probably makes you, you know, certainly empathetic, but probably in a lot of ways, like such a good role model to your students, that, you know, this was something that didn't come naturally to you, that you didn't really enjoy, and here you are, and you've been doing it for, you know, a long time, which really has to be impactful for your students, so I, you know, I could imagine how helpful that would be for your students, and I'm just really appreciative to you as well.
Thank you.
Lyle?
Well, I wasn't going to tell a personal story, but now I will. So back in the late eighties, I was principal at Washington Village School, and we did a renovation project there, and I drove by the other day, and things still look great, even better than when the old principal was there, me. And I recognize, I'm sure things have still, are still the same, that I'm sure you just don't teach math and science at the school, I'm sure you have many, many other hats that you wear, because that's just what people do at small village schools, so thank you for everything you're doing.
Ah, thank you.
At this point, unless there are other comments, I do have a resolution by the State Board of Education for Kathy, and I'm sorry, Kathy, is it, how do you pronounce your last name?
Jingress.
Jingress, okay, thank you, I'm glad I asked. So I have a resolution, which is, whereas the White House has awarded Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching to outstanding teachers of science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science from elementary, middle, and secondary schools across the nation, and whereas, through state selection committees, mathematics finalists and science finalists were chosen from each state, and whereas Kathy Jingress has over thirty years of experience teaching and is currently in her fifth year as a third and fourth grade math and science teacher at Washington Village School, and whereas Kathy was praised by one of her peers for her creation of a nurturing learning environment that establishes high expectations for all learners, and whereas Kathy was chosen as one of Vermont's state finalists to receive an award for excellence in mathematics teaching, now therefore be it resolved that the Vermont State Board of Education congratulates Kathy Jingress upon the honor of being selected as one of Vermont's truly outstanding teachers of mathematics. This is dated today, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, by the State Board of Education. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you again for having me come.
Thanks. All right, Catherine, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. Thanks you all for making this happen, it is such an incredible accomplishment that these teachers are, the process that they've gone through, in addition to just having such high expectations and holding high expectations in their classroom for their students and themselves. Um, okay, so Alyssa Castellini is a third through fifth grade science teacher at Bethel Elementary School, and she really focuses on making science accessible to all students and promoting the growth for every student in her classroom. Over the course of the past ten years, Alyssa has developed her skills as an educator, excelling at engaging all students in scientific inquiry and discovery. She puts equity inclusion at the forefront of her teaching practice and pays attention to individual student needs, addressing them in a way that builds confidence and engages learners. Alyssa readily tackles student misconceptions by using examples that students can easily understand, and then draw parallels to the material at hand. Acknowledging that there is always more for her to learn as an educator, she uses data to guide her teaching and to highlight areas for improvement in her own practices. Alyssa is also a leader in her professional community, she exhibits a willingness to step up as a lead educator, serving as a role model for other teachers and providing avenues by which they can improve their teaching practices. This year, we had the pleasure of witnessing Alyssa's leadership abilities as she assumed the responsibility of leading the White River Valley Supervisor Union K-five science educators to further develop the district's proficiency-based learning initiatives, and I just want to really, really acknowledge all that Alyssa has done for elementary science education at the White River Valley School Supervisor Union. So if any of you have any kind of connection to White River Valley Supervisor Union and are able to reach out and congratulate Alyssa, that would be amazing. And then the, we have one other finalist, Joanne Harvey. She is a second grade teacher at Georgia Elementary School who models a passion for science, she encourages young, her young learners to deepen their understanding of science concepts through engaging instructional practices that inspire curiosity and inquiry. As her students explore and question the environment around them, Joanne addresses student questions and misconceptions by bringing in real-world connections and experiences into her classroom. She does this by using hands-on teaching strategies that ensure that every student understands the material and is able to engage with it in a meaning, meaningful and authentic way. The activities and learning experiences are so powerful that students come back years later to talk about what they learned in Ms. Harvey's class. Joanne's enthusiasm for science extends outside of the school day, she has a longstanding commitment to running after-school STEM clubs and creating opportunities for community engagement in the school setting. She created a planet walk in the school building, a bird sanctuary, and a labyrinth outside the building, giving all in the community an opportunity to engage and learn in these alternative educational spaces. A colleague of Joanne shared with us that Joanne has demonstrated a commitment to excellence in teaching and has made a significant impact on the lives of her students, families, and our community, and a parent shared, what sets Joanne apart is her unwavering enthusiasm and creativity in the classroom. So, that's Joanne Harvey, so thank you all again for providing this space and time to acknowledge these amazing educators.
Well, and, and just hearing this makes me feel lucky all over again to live where we live, to have such dedicated teachers who really, you know, think creatively and include everybody, you know, everyone within the school and, you know, as well as members of the community, it really just, it shows, you know, really how special our teachers are, and I'm just so grateful to all of our finalists, so thank you, and I hope all of you, you know, wish you best of luck as you move on to the next level. And if there are any other comments or questions, I can pause a moment, or I also have the resolutions for our other two finalists. Okay, so hearing none, this is the Vermont State Board of Education Resolution for Alyssa Castellini. Whereas the White House has awarded Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching to outstanding teachers of science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science from elementary, middle, and secondary schools across the nation, and whereas, through state selection committees, mathematics finalists and science finalists were chosen from each state, and whereas Alyssa Castellini has over twelve years of experience teaching and is currently in her first year as a third, fourth, and fifth grade science teacher at Bethel Elementary School, and whereas Alyssa's mentor commended her teaching practice for putting equity and inclusion at the forefront, they're motivating and engaging students of all abilities, and whereas Alyssa was chosen as one of Vermont's state's finalists to receive an award for excellence in science teaching, now therefore be it resolved that the Vermont State Board of Education congratulates Alyssa Castellini upon the honor of being selected as one of Vermont's truly outstanding teachers of science, also dated this twelfth day of June, two thousand twenty-four. And one more, this is the Vermont State Board of Education Resolution for Joanne Harvey. Whereas the White House has awarded Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching to outstanding teachers of science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science from elementary, middle, and secondary schools across the nation, and whereas, through state selection committees, mathematics finalists and science finalists were chosen from each state, and whereas Joanne Harvey has over forty-one years of experience teaching and is currently in her twelfth year as a second grade teacher at Georgia Elementary School, and whereas one of Joanne's peers favorably remarked that her initiative to take her class to the outdoor classroom daily for exploration and learning even during the winter months demonstrates her commitment to experiential learning and leadership in education beyond the conventional classroom setting, and whereas Joanne was chosen as one of Vermont's state's finalists to receive an award for excellence in science teaching, now therefore be it resolved that the Vermont State Board of Education congratulates Joanne Harvey upon the honor of being selected as one of Vermont's truly outstanding teachers of science, also dated this twelfth day of June, two thousand twenty-four. So each of the finalists will receive an official copy in the mail, and these will also be included as a link to our meeting minutes, but again, Kathy, best of luck to you and to the other finalists, and we look forward to hearing more good news. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to circle back one last time for public to be heard, if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, you can press the hand icon to raise your hand, or star five if you're calling in. And I am not seeing anyone, so we will have public comment again at the end of our meeting, in case we've missed anybody. At this point, I'm going to move on and entertain a motion to approve our meeting minutes from May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, is there a motion? Moved by Kim? Is there a second? All second?
I kept raising my hand, sorry, second.
Well, and I can't see everyone all at once, so I'm sorry if I missed you.
Yeah, no, I couldn't get my mic off fast enough, sorry.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? Hearing none, we've approved the motion, thank you, and this will bring us to board announcements, if there are any members who have an announcement.
I just remind everyone that tomorrow is El Carde for both, both of our sets of rules, updating the book to two thousand, the Q S seven to twenty-two hundred series, so we will have more updates for everyone at our next meeting, but, you know, we're, we're greatly anticipating our time for the El Carde Committee and their feedback, and hopefully their approval, so just a quick update.
So yes, Kim and I and Tammy, are you coming personally or zooming in?
I will zoom.
Okay, so we will be there tomorrow, and we'll report back out to the board. Other board announcements? I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the meeting, Aleah had emailed yesterday to say that she had something come up and thought that she was not going to be able to join us today. I did invite her, I didn't know if she had prepared her reflections on serving as a student board member, but invited her to share them with us if she had, if she does send me anything, I'll be sure to send that on to the board as well. And I know that Zoe had indicated that you need to leave by eleven, so I think we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, which is great, and then the other thing I just wanted to announce, I read in the news today that the cat Max, an actual cat, a six-year-old tabby, received a doctor of literature from Vermont State University, so apparently he was a bit of a cat mascot, but he, his name was called at the graduation ceremony, so I was just going to, you know, shout out to Max the cat for receiving perhaps one of the first degrees from the state of Vermont. Jenna?
Okay, well, hearing that, I won't hold back, I'd like to give a shout out to Gray. Gray, I was cheering for you for your, during your eight hundred at the New England Qualifier Race in Essex, so got to see Gray run a great race, so congratulations on your, your eight hundred, and probably your whole season, yeah, it was great, and I have to sign off at nine thirty for about a half an hour, we'll be back after.
Great. All right, any other board announcements? All right, hearing none, Gray, I'm going to turn it over to you for the student report, and love to hear the update on how that eight hundred went.
Uh, yeah, hi, it's too bad that Aleah's not here today, I'll restate that, since it was supposed to be her final meeting, I hope she sends us something in terms of final remarks, but for now, it's just me. School is almost over, it's not totally over, our last day of school is a half-day this Friday, but graduation happened last week, we're not really doing anything in school anymore, that's just kind of, we're still there, and, yeah, that's pretty much it, graduation, so lots of my friends graduated, and I went to the graduation ceremony, which was really nice, all of our final stuff has happened, sports seasons are over, the last jazz concert happened, we went to the Burlington Jazz Festival and performed, marching band, season is closed, yeah, at this point, there's not anything going on in school, but that's kind of the, the wrap-up of everything, our track season ended two weeks ago when we went to states, our four-by-eight team, my four-by-eight team, we Our four-by-eight team, my four-by-eight team, we won again for the division, which is good. And this is our third consecutive win for our division. And probably our last one because I'm the only non-senior of the four of us. So, it would be, it would be tough to recreate that next year, and I might have to think more on individual events, which will be all right. And, yeah, not a lot else is happening. That's pretty much it.
Do you guys get to do fun things in school while you're, you know, winding down the school year?
A little bit, it depends on the teacher you have. For me, pretty much all of my classes this year were AP classes, so they end even earlier because once the AP tests are done, you know, well, it depends on the teacher. Like in my calculus class, we're done. We do whatever we want in that class each day. And then in some classes, the teachers will carry on with just trying to push more work along and trying to get to units that are not covered by the test anymore. Like in my AP physics class, he just keeps going because he thinks that there are lots of units that should be covered on the AP test that are not covered. So, now we're in electricity.
So, you actually are, you know, continuing to learn material in these, this last week of school?
Yeah, in some classes.
All right, Tammy?
Thanks for the update, Gray. I'm curious, you know, our last couple of meetings, I mean, you also have the important responsibility of serving on your local school board. And I know you, there's been, you've been sort of updating us as, as time has gone on about your budget and some of the hard decisions that have been going on. I'm just curious, sort of, how has that resolved itself? And, and can you give us an update there? Because I know that was a really important part of your school year as well.
Yeah, it did eventually get passed on our, I don't know, I want to say the third vote, the second revote. It was a big deal in our community and in our towns for a while. And, but for the final revote, we didn't, we didn't end up cutting a lot. The last time we tried to just, you know, we only cut a few things and we're really trying to get a large amount of voters to turn up, which we did, we got more voters and that than we did at the original vote, which was actually on town meeting day, which is pretty impressive, and no one thought it would happen. And on both sides of it, which is interesting, there's still a lot of people that voted and tried to vote down the, the budget again, which I don't really know why that is, but that is still happening. It is, the budget season is now closed though, and we're happy about that. It was not too bad for us. Ultimately, we had to cut some, some things that I wasn't too happy about, but we survived. And, yeah, I think we're all a little bit worried about next year and trying to get the budget passed again and just how much time it took up. So, that's kind of looming over everyone a bit, but I think for now, the schools are just glad that everything worked out semi-okay. And we did not really, a big thing we were worried about is losing teachers just because we hadn't passed a budget of them just leaving because, you know, or running out of time, and we did not really run into that problem. Basically, no one left because of that reason. So, that's, that's good, and I'm glad about that. And I think this Monday was our last school board meeting before August. And so, two of our, we have four student representatives on our school board, two of which were seniors and left. And I thought that four was too many, so when we were asked, me and Quincy, who's the other member of the school board that's a student, were asked about, you know, who it should be for next year, we're both like, eh, we don't really need anyone, let's keep it at two people. So, or I'm trying to, it's kind of, we don't have like a solid system in place. The two people that were there before us, not to discredit them because they're both two of my close friends, but were, you know, picked kind of randomly because they couldn't find anyone in the school that was willing to do the student representative position. So, they kind of went to these people and they're like, you don't have to do anything, just sit in the meeting so we have school members. And so, I'm trying to, you know, really establish two members that are two rotating members, same as this board, and trying to increase the presence that student members actually have on the board. Because prior to this year, I don't think they really spoke, which is always unfortunate. So, hopefully that'll get better as the years go by.
Thanks for your leadership, Gray. I know serving on the state board and your local school board is, is quite a commitment, so thank you for all you do.
Thanks.
Kim?
Thanks, Gray. I love the, the experience you're bringing to what should be left behind you. I think that is so helpful to establish a real system for inviting real student voice to decision-making tables. And so, thank you so much for doing that. And I am wondering to what extent, because I think it's different across all of our high schools especially, but to what extent there's a nexus between the student government and the state board, or your, I'm sorry, your local school board? Does that overlap? Have you served in both? Has that typically been the case for those who sit on your school board?
There's, there's a lot of different things at our school in terms of things you could call student government. Because we have like, each, these are a lot of systems that I wish were more in place because in reality, it just kind of changes class to class, certainly with student government. Like our class has, you know, a class president, a vice president, I'm the secretary, and then treasurer. So, there's like an actual, you know, student council. That does not really, all we do for that is mostly just fundraising and planning like fun activities for our class. We kind of had, and like this year, we had the prom planning committee, stuff like that. Next year, we'll be in charge of like Project Grad. That's not a lot of, that's not anything like, it doesn't really have any real ties to the school board. Then there's also, there's groups, like there's a group called Full Send in our school, and they're in charge of a lot of communicating with the principal about policy. And they organize events, like they organized a social justice festival last month and trying to communicate with the students and just lots of activism activities within the school. All those things are, well, not really the class officers, those other things though are vaguely interconnected. Like we make sure on the school board to have good connection with that group. They just, this Monday presented, and lots of my friends are in Full Send, so we have good contact. And it's not a very large school, you know, everyone knows each other, so it's pretty easy, I think, on the student end of things to communicate well. And that's one thing I'm really trying to work on is to make sure that people know who their representatives are on the school board. Because I think lots of times people don't know or don't bother to ask, and I try to communicate what I know from the school board with people, you know, because it matters to them. And certainly during the budget season, I would get asked, you know, what's happening? Like, what happened with this program? Is it true that this program is cut? Is it true that the, you know, bathroom project is affecting this school board this much, stuff like that? So, I was able to, I think, communicate with a lot of the school. And during, leading up to our final vote, you know, I was able to take groups of students, I say that like I organized it, which I, I didn't alone. But, um, taking lots of students and just putting them out on the side of the road with signs and stuff to promote going out and to vote for the budget on the day of the final vote, and that was with people from, I think, every grade and both people from Full Send and, you know, past government and the school board and everything. So, I think there's a good amount of connection across the board.
Thank you, and I think your unique perspective, we had spoken before, and I know in advance of AP exams that we, you weren't focusing on that at all, but you had mentioned an interest in establishing sort of a network across all of the schools, whatever their structure is for either school board members or school leadership to help inform state board of ed student representation. And I was excited to hear your interest in that project and look forward to supporting you in whatever way we can. It'll, it'll bring an even deeper student voice to our work. So, thank you so much for your, I think, I would characterize it as systems thinking and wanting to leave a legacy of structure that can be replicated, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I still, that's still something I really want to do, and I know that's something that other states have. And that is something, yeah, now the AP season is over, that will be something that certainly over the summer, I want to start working on and connecting with people and seeing what other states do. And trying to just at first get emails of lots of people who serve on school boards or whatever student government their school has. It's just tricky because which student government is prominent or matters from school to school varies greatly. So, I don't know, like if I just looked at people who are on the school board, that might not matter in lots of schools. And if I just look at, you know, class officers, I might get a lot of, you know, fundraising groups like it is at our school. So, it's just tough, and I kind of need to reach out to schools directly to see like, which students are the right students to contact about this, which positions? But that's definitely something that I, I plan to work on.
Thank you.
Gray, I'm wondering with your school board, how many adults are on your school board? And then how many of the students vote?
Um, adults, it's like, it's a similar size to this board. I don't have an exact number that comes to mind, but it's probably like 12 adults. And then none of the students vote. And, which is something that I've advocated for this year, and we don't know exactly how it will work. So, that's something I'm going to research over the summer, and the plan is to then present my findings to the board again in August about how that would maybe work. But, yeah, that's kind of, that's one of the reasons I pushed to move down to two members. There's four members, we sat there, at least in every other year, according to the representatives that had been on the school board. It's never been a position where they've talked before, other than a student report. They give their student report, and then there's no other comments. They don't go into executive session, no one's on committees, and they don't vote. So, it's not, it's not a big position exactly. So, I'm hoping to morph it into something more like it is on the state board, which is nice. And I, I will bring that up when I try to talk about the system I want to establish. Because what we have with the state board is really nice, you know, I feel, you know, like I'm really a member and I'm able to help out in lots of ways. So, thank you all for that, and there's just clearly a good and consistent system established here for that that I think would be easy to replicate, well, not maybe easy, but we're able to replicate it, I think, on a school board level. And, you know, I think that's a possibility, and it's not going to be with four people that just kind of sit at the meetings and vaguely pay attention. So, I'm, I'm trying to move us in that direction.
And on a related note, what are your plans for the summer?
Uh, just generally, I, I have a lot of things that I'm doing over the summer. Next, next week, me and two buddies of mine are going to go on a week-long camping and backpacking trip in Maine. And we're going to hike Mount Katton, which may be something we're not prepared for at all, but I'll find out. And the week after that, I'm going to Boy State for a week, which is something I'm really excited about because for a long time, I felt that was a super cool opportunity. And I've always hoped that I would be selected to Boy State, but there's, it's not an application process. I don't know if that's everywhere, but certain, at our school, it's just you're selected or you're not selected. So, since I was in middle school, I'm like, this, you know, because I want to go into political science after high school. And like, I really hope I'm selected for that, and I'm, I'm glad I was, so that's kind of a relief for me. And then the week after that, my family is going on a trip to Washington DC to visit schools. That's also Fourth of July week, so it's going to be super busy, but, so I can visit some colleges there like Georgetown and George Washington and American. Because those are some schools that are on the top of my list. And then there's still a lot of other things this summer, I have a pretty busy summer. It's also my final summer of being a Boy Scout, and all of us that are older scouts, because I'm working on my Eagle Scout project. And all of us that are older scouts are going to Seabase, which is in the Florida Keys for a week for our kind of final Boy Scout adventure. But those are the major things at least, so I'm excited for summer.
Sounds like you're getting some good trips in, and a lot of very kinds of trips, which is nice.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Gray?
I'm very appreciative of Gray, and your sense of inclusion really resonates with me. You don't only see yourself, you try to incorporate and include others by, by what I always say, students should not be just seen or counted as numbers, but numbers. So, thank you for all you do, you're very appreciative, keep it up. You are a very busy student, oh my goodness.
Thank you, and I, I agree with that, and that's what I, in my speech to my school board when I was talking about voting, I said in order for that, there's two things in order for it to be true student representation in my mind, which is that there has to be a vote for there to be a legitimate seat at the table, which I think is tough for a lot of school boards. And it is a tricky thing, and I understand that, but in order to be actually, actual representation on a literal sense, I think there has to be a vote. And also that I think students should be elected by the school in order for it to be actual representation. Because if we're just appointed by the school board, then, you know, that can be whoever, and there's not really representation at all if we're trying to add voice to a board of people that already selected us. So, both are tricky things, but both are things that I'm trying to work on.
Well, thank you, I hope you have a productive and fun summer. You've got a lot of stuff going on, but it's always great to hear your reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the secretaries update. So, Zoe, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, good morning. For my secretary's update today, I just want to reaffirm my commitment to staying tightly coordinated with the State Board of Education and ensuring that you receive updates on all the great work underway at the agency. In coordinating with, with Jennifer and Tammy, I recognize that board members may not be receiving some of our updates through both the field report and some of our press releases. So, that's something that we are correcting, and moving forward, you will be part of that listserv so that you can stay up to date on all the great happenings occurring here at the agency and the ways in which we are supporting the field. So, hopefully you will, you know, enjoy receiving that information if you are not already. And we are very open to, you know, continuing to have that dialogue and making sure that, that you're staying abreast of the progress we're making at the Agency of Education. Just in terms of a few highlights over the last month, we did award our after-school grants. And so, that is an effort that was really designed to expand access to affordable and enriching after-school and summer experiences. Really proud that the awardees are very representative of geographic diversity of our state and hope that you'll have an opportunity to read about the various innovative programs that are being implemented that are helping to expand learning opportunities for our students and particularly those students in our higher-poverty communities. Also, we were able to expand the summer meals benefit this summer. That happened in coordination with the Agency of Health and Human Services and in support of, of some technology upgrades. So, it was really a cross-functional effort, and now many families will be benefiting from that this summer. It's a new federal program that our congressional delegation was very involved in championing. Overall, as we're, the agency, we're doing a lot of work this summer in really focused planning to develop the priorities and strategic direction for the agency. We are doing that in coordination with different roundtable conversations, the stakeholder groups. And we'll begin to develop a listen-and-learn tour that will likely start, you know, August and go into the fall. Given that many people are on break in summer, it's hard to capture everyone during the summer months. But we are really prioritizing working more with our administrators and folks that are available in the summer to build partnerships as we are engaged in some more of the regional planning later in the fall time to get input around those priorities and ensuring that alignment. So, those are the updates. We do have a number of conferences that the agency is preparing for in the fall, including related to school safety, nutrition, broader strategic planning and support. So, there's a lot of great things that are happening at the agency this summer that will be hard at work and looking forward to sharing an update when you reconvene in August around, you know, how we're positioning ourselves to be very supportive of the key priorities for the 2024-25 academic year. And as I mentioned initially, when I published the 100-day report, many of those themes that I identified are still rising to the fore. And I, I see really what we're identifying as some key priorities are really improving literacy. We'll hear a little bit more about how we're working on that in today's meeting, also focusing on expanding college. Also focusing on expanding college and career opportunities. And overall, we're seeing a lot of mental health needs that are also tied to chronic absenteeism. So those are some of the emergent themes, um, that are coming up. Um, and we'll continue to validate that and, and to define the agency strategy and, and being supportive of those and kind of our final set of priorities that come out, um, towards the early fall.
And Zoe, I'm wondering, can we include, um, in our minutes, the, um, I've seen it, but the announcement about the after school program recipients as well as the summer meals? Cause I think it'd be good to have that in the, um, packet for the month.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Board members, comments, questions? Kim?
Thank you. It's great to hear about the work coming down the pipe. I know from our last meeting and I, I was reminded about it from our minutes. There was an intention to share some, um, if more information about the use of that form. I know you did a follow-up email to us, um, that may be helpful to include in these minutes. But I think, um, it didn't necessarily give us any information on those 55 independent schools that responded, how many of those had, either were employing or contacting with a licensed special educator as opposed to using that module. And then I understand, I think that the form has changed by the email you sent. And I did not see where we had access to what the new form is. Just thinking about it in my, um, 2200 hat as a member of that committee. And knowing that the language around that very section changed in the new 2200. Any follow-up on that would be
Certainly. Well, thank you for the question, Kim. Um, so just as a recap for the board at the last meeting, there was a question around the, um, independent school form, um, that we, um, have aligned to the revised 2200 series. We did submit a follow-up and we listened to the feedback, um, from that conversation to make some, um, clarifying, clarifying adjustments to that form, uh, because there was some confusion at the, at the board level. So, um, as a follow-up, we rephrased the question and that will be in the future application. To ensure, um, that independent schools understand, uh, the two distinct functions and responsibilities. So one is that they're identifying a staff person who can act as a liaison to engaging with the LEA around special education, uh, needs. And two is ensuring that the independent school is providing all services required by each individual IEP. So I think there was some confusion, uh, before. So we made some, uh, clarifying adjustments, um, to establish, um, that clarity. We also are communicating as part of our technical assistance to independent schools, making sure that they understand that. Um, and that's, that's part of our, our feedback. In terms of the revised rules, so, um, as you mentioned, you have your I-CAR day tomorrow. So in anticipation of that, we have done a crosswalk as it relates to, um, the special education staffing requirements, for the revised rules and the, and the, the, the recently revised and then the most recently revised rules. And there, it maintains that the independent school is not required, um, to have, um, a special, a special education educator. So the form from that perspective will, will continue to remain, um, the same. And we are in the process of, you know, helping to, to transition and ensuring that those rules are in place. It's unlikely that all of those elements will be in place by the fall, um, but we are working on, on a timeline for that.
Um, just as follow-up, I'm thinking, as I recall from that section of the rules, it, um, it doesn't allow for sort of an interpretation. It doesn't say they have to have anybody on staff, but they have to be contracted with a licensed special educator in the newest set of rules. It doesn't, uh, the piece that, uh, left the agency to determine what qualifies is no longer in the new set of rules. So I'm not sure if that was, um, clear and is aligned with the new form that you're talking about or this, your understanding of the expectations.
So I'm not sure that Emily Simmons or Meg Porcello is on the call today. But I can follow up with them just to confirm as they're doing that crosswalk with the, um, rules that will be adopted, um, after your R-Car, I-Car tomorrow.
Thank you. And, and then just finally, maybe for our next meeting, and I, it, it had been, requested and, and was again reminded in the minutes that Jennifer had requested that we get a breakdown on those that have, um, currently completed the form, those 55. How many of those are indicating they have either a license or contracted with versus using that module as their answer to, um, satisfying the requirements?
If my, if my recollection holds, I believe it was one applicant responded to that, but I will certainly follow up to confirm that in terms of the use of the module as an option.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments or questions? All right. Just making sure I'm not missing anybody. I don't see any hands raised. So Zoe, thank you very much.
I think Tom has his hand up.
Oh, Tom, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, Zoe, just, um, maybe not for this meeting, but I'm interested on, um, how the, um, school district standards, the district quality standards and the, um, Q, the quality assurance, processes, um, is going, um, seeing as how it's pretty new. But if that, we could have some information on that either today or at a future meeting, that'd be great.
Absolutely. And, and that's actually one of our focus areas over the summer as well. So I appreciate you bringing that up. We can share more information around our timeline. Absolutely.
I keep, I, I have some work going on up the street for me, so I keep muting myself. Um, are there any other comments, questions? Right. Do one last pass if I'm missing anybody, um, but I don't see anyone. So, um, all right. Zoe, thank you very much. And at this point, if we have Ted and Lindsay with us, um, I will, brings us to our legislative update.
Yes, Lindsay will be leading us with that.
All right. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning, everyone. Just give me one second. I'm gonna share my screen here.
And while Lindsay is loading that, um, as you know, um, we, um, this meeting is occurring, uh, before the veto session. And so what we are focusing on are those bills that, um, that have been passed and to share with you a little bit more as we think from the agency perspective around implementation on some of these, uh, key bills. And then we will provide a comprehensive, um, legislative update, um, at your next meeting or, uh, however you decide whether that be August or September.
And I'd also asked, um, you know, during these presentations, if you could flag anything that it, um, implicates the, the state board of ed, um, just because I want to make sure that we've got a good set of eyes, um, paying attention to that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you all for bearing with me here. Um, so good morning. My name is Lindsay Hedges. I am the Agency of Education's Policy Communication Specialist. Thank you for having me back. Um, as Secretary Saunders just said, I'm going to be pretty brief today. Um, in the hopes that you'll have me back in August for more of a part two, to give a comprehensive session overview like we did last year. Um, at this point, at that point, we'll have a clearer picture of what has passed and not passed, um, in the wake of the legislative session. So today, just pull up the next slide here. Can you all see the slides? All right. Awesome. Okay. So today I'm going to stick to highlighting session themes, um, and then pass it off to our subject matter experts, who are going to speak on implementation of literacy in school construction bills that were passed this session. Um, and then at the end, we will save some time for questions. So to jump right into session themes, when we spoke to you a few months ago, um, we discussed two of our major policy initiatives this session, which were literacy and CTE. You'll hear about literacy more in just a few moments. CTE did not pass this session. Figuring out the best way forward for funding reform was the major stumbling, stumbling block there. And CTE along with some of the other broader education policy initiatives got tied into the bigger conversation of the cost of education more generally and the overall vision for the future of Vermont education. And so as Secretary Saunders said, the veto session begins this coming Monday. The, uh, General Assembly will be gathering back in and working on the yield bill, among other things. Um, and the yield bill will likely contain a working group that will begin to dig into the education, uh, funding system and, uh, the vision of education. And we believe that conversations around CTE will likely be part of that. And again, we'll have a better idea of the plans are, um, for that work. And again, how that implicates the state board, um, after next week, once that all kind of shakes out. Um, and we'll be, make sure to report back, um, more thoroughly in a few months. So with that, unless there's any questions, um, I'm going to keep it brief today and pass it back to Secretary Saunders.
Great. Thank you. Um, and as, as the board knows, uh, we're continuing to focus on CTE. We will be, you know, collaborating with you as we look at, um, opportunities to modernize the, the rules, um, for CTE. Additionally, we are engaging with a consultant, um, who will be providing some additional recommendations to us, um, in the fall timeframe, um, as it relates to, um, considerations related to governance and funding, um, to really promote, um, greater access, um, and opportunities, uh, within career and technical education. So we will continue to keep you updated on that and are being really mindful of how we, um, balance the opportunity to modernize the rules while also, um, you know, aligning that with some of the need for a broader reform. Um, and we are getting some, I just wanted to share that we're actively engaged in that as I know it is also a priority, um, of the state board. And, uh, we'll certainly have some additional recommendations from our consultant, um, in the coming months. I think will guide us, um, as we move forward with that work. Um, and then I'll pause there. I was going to make a couple of other comments related to the other areas. Kim, did you have a specific question?
It's not specific to CTE, but it, it was, um, looking to understand a little more, um, hopes out of the veto session. The, is there a policy position that the governor was looking to have happen regarding the yield bill? The, the session involved robust testimony to arrive at that bill. So just in the veto, is there a policy position that is being offered?
Yes. And the governor shared some remarks around this yesterday at his press conference when asked. You know, his, um, you know, goal and objective is to see if we can lower, um, the tax burden. In looking, um, at opportunities to do that, there will be some conversations today, um, with legislature to see if there's opportunities for, um, us to come to, um, an agreement, um, that, uh, really helps to, um, you know, further our, our work around long-term planning on, on structural reform while it can address the immediate, you know, uh, relief for taxpayers in this next fiscal year. So there'll be more updates, um, likely this afternoon around, um, what sort, what sort of, um, compromises could potentially, um, come out of those meetings today. Um, and I think one thing that would be important to note is that, you know, this would be, you know, looking at, you know, a phased approach to this, right? Reform does take, uh, longer time, uh, but there are some opportunities hopefully to create some, um, additional relief for tax burden, uh, for taxpayers immediately. And that's what we'll be looking at in terms of options.
That's like after the budgets have passed. This is this, the, um, it, it just seems as though unfortunately, um, legislation happening in last minute opportunities around education happens all too often when local communities have already passed their budgets. And to cram into a two-day session that which was not able to be achieved in a five-month session seems, surprising to me to have this be the time when, um, such recommendations are being made.
Yeah. Uh, more related to, you know, how there might be opportunity to, to buy down, um, that, um, additional rate be the focus.
Yeah. And I think that unfortunately, having done local budgets for, you know, 15 years, that can often create a cliff that makes for terrible, um, positioning for future years. So I, I caution.
Yeah, I think there are, um, this has to be, you know, a, a well-balanced and well-informed conversation. As we, you know, try to look at all the possibilities to, um, to achieve both goals of alleviating the tax burden and ensuring, um, that our, our schools can be successful. So.
Yeah. And again, I, I think that following the, um, work that local boards have done in passing their budgets over many months and many iterations, I think would be important to be respectfully appreciating and inviting opportunity for thoughtful planning around funding change. I mean, this funding system has been in place for a very long time, unwinding it in two days. Or, or even putting Band-Aids on something when communities have spoken is dangerous policy.
So I think the, the intent is for us to have, as I said, a more well-rounded conversation around that and, and understanding a phased approach as, as we look at these possibilities. So, um, we'll, we'll be able to share more updates, um, today, um, this afternoon around that. Um, and I do think it will fall back into also considering that larger vision. Um, and so as Lindsay mentioned, the working group will likely be part, um, of that. Um, and the state board of education does have a role, as does the agency and many other stakeholders, um, in really helping to provide input around that, um, so that really any sort of structural change is also aligned to the larger educational goals and vision of the state. Uh, as it relates, and Jennifer, did you have a question before I introduce literacy?
Well, I was gonna, um, my questions were about CTE. Um, you mentioned that you're, you, you have hired or are hiring a consultant.
We've been under contract with a consultant. They provided an initial report, uh, months ago. And then they're, um, providing additional, um, guidance for us in the fall.
Okay. So this is APA?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And then I was wondering, and maybe you don't, because I know that you're still kind of in the initial stages of, um, looking at the CTE rules, but I'm, do you have a sense of the timeline? Or maybe if you don't, then, um, I would request that you share that with us when you do know.
I will certainly share it with you. Um, I'm meeting with a, the team and I are meeting with APA. I believe we have it scheduled in the next week or two, um, to really, um, get an update and also clarify and the final deliverable and the scope of that. Uh, so certainly, um, and you know, by next month, we'll be able to provide you an update on that.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking, just to be fully transparent about this, is when it comes to the board, we are going to have to retain counsel to help us, which means that we're going to have to put together a request and, you know, put it out to bid and then, um, you know, and my experience is that that always takes, you know, four months if we're lucky. So, um, trying to figure out, you know, if this is something that's going to hit the FY25 budget or, or, you know, just kind of where we are with that process. So, because, you know, if it, if it's going to come to us in December from the agency, then I would need to sort of count backwards to figure out like how long it's going to take to get someone in place who will be able to help the board, um, once we get the package from the agency.
Right. And I see, you know, just to Carol, as when, um, is on camera too, and she's here, um, and she can provide some input. But we are working closely on that to really develop a timeline. Uh, as I, as I said, we do want to be thoughtful, um, in, in setting, you know, clear expectations around the timing of this and want to make sure that we can incorporate, um, the feedback from our consultant. I think that's going to be really critical to make sure that, um, the, the recommendations we bring forward and any revised rules are, um, very thoughtful. And will be supportive of long-term sustainability. So we are trying to be mindful of the need to, to modernize while also balancing that by making sure we have the right input, um, to guide those revisions. to guide those revisions. So we'll, we're working through that and we'll certainly be able to provide greater clarity around the timeline and expectations very soon.
Great, thank you.
So at this point, I will, we're going to focus on the literacy initiative. This is a bill, Act 139, was just passed. We're really excited about it. It builds on a lot of the work from Act 28 and much of the initiatives that the agency supported through the COVID-19 relief funding in terms of promoting literacy, evidence-based literacy training. So we're really excited. This was very much a collaborative effort to get initiative of this scale across the finish line is really exciting. And I just want to note too, that this work will require a paradigm shift in how we teach and learn. And so it's really important that we take a very comprehensive approach and, and happy to, you know, report that I do think this act is, is doing that in a very responsible way and looking at teacher preparation and professional development as a component. Also looking at early screening and intervention as an important component and ensuring that our schools and teachers have access to evidence-based resources and curriculum. So at this point, I will turn it over to Jess DeCarles or Emily Lesh to walk through the specifics of Act 139 and the agency's beginning of our implementation planning.
Sure. Hi, hi folks, Jess DeCarles. I'm Division Director of the Student Pathways Division. I'm joined by my colleague, hopefully, though I'm not seeing her on screen yet, Emily Lesh. So Emily, if you're there, do you want to say hello? Is she, is she on, Lindsay?
I'm checking the list.
I don't see her on Jess.
I was just about to shoot her a quick message.
Okay, great, thank you. So, and I'll go ahead and get started, but just as a sort of overview, the Student Pathways Division oversees CTE, adult education, content standards, local comprehensive assessment systems, flexible pathways, proficiency-based learning, personalized learning, flexible pathways, education technology and after-school and summer programs. And then in addition, we have led several of these legislative initiatives, including academic recovery. But literacy, going back to Act 28, as well as community schools. And I know that you were able to hear from North Country. So delighted that you had that opportunity, would love to have an opportunity to share the, the work of the entire cohort at some point. We've also been engaged in some digital storytelling that might be of interest to folks. The Act 139 literacy, it really does build off of work that we've been doing for several years. And I do want to credit folks who also are on this call. That really, I, I would actually go back to Act 173 and the DMG report, which really has been the paradigm shift and the policy drivers for much of the work that we're doing, not just in literacy, but generally overall and how I designed our approach to academic recovery and those investments. So really, Act 139 is sort of codifying in law several of the actions that we've already taken and taking it a bit further to provide some structure so we can be coherent in our messaging and support and leadership to the field. So as you see here with Act 139, you have major elements, it's the findings. The findings really also built from what was in Act 28, a focus on reading assessment intervention, literacy, professional learning, that's both in-service and I think getting into pre-service and thinking about ROPA, the Advisory Council on Literacy and extending that. The literacy position, which is actually Emily Lesh, who was a limited service position that was created through ARPESTER funding and Act 28, and then expanding early childhood literacy resources. And that, that implicates the Department of Libraries. Next slide, Lindsay. So the findings, you know, and again, the council was, I think, codified in Act 28 and is an extension, but obviously there was already statute in Title 16, speaking to both the literacy initiative, the literacy state plan and who should be coordinating on that. There were some shifts within that space because the agency wasn't actually named in state law as having a role to play. So I think that will also help to create some coherence within the field, both across AHS, the State Board and the Agency of Education. But what the findings articulated was that explicit and systematic instruction on code-based and comprehension-based reading skills and needs-based support are the most effective literacy practices for the early grades. This is very much in line with existing practices that we have, particularly under ESSO, which is federal legislation, in which whenever we're making investments in strategies, content, materials, programs, platforms, that we really should be making those investments based on four levels of evidence that are determined and detailed in both federal law and then also on our website. It also identified or found that a strong focus was needed on those essential literacy development skills in early literacy learning, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension for all students. And needs-based tiers and layers of support are critical for struggling learners, which again is codified both in law and, and state board rule. It also found that reading instruction is interwoven into the principles of creating culturally responsive and inclusive environments for all students. So really wanting to be forward-thinking, not having to go back and tweak this and being conscious of the work that the Act One Group and the State Board has been engaged in for several years to update the education quality standards and wanting to start from where we want to go on, not have to backtrack again. Next slide. The literacy assessment intervention for K-3, again, the, the focus remains with K-3. That's consistent with national research and with policy levers that have been published from various national entities and, and regional entities like RELNEI. So where, where it landed is that the AOE is going to issue guidance on universal screeners. This is something that we already do around local comprehensive assessment systems. We did have an innovation last year where we created these pullouts, these appendices that really detail and do an evaluation of different assessment programs across all content areas. This is really having us continue that work, but also adding a few more details that might help people to make decisions when they are making investment requests, when they're communicating with their boards and with their staff. All public and approved independent schools are to screen students kindergarten through grade three annually. This is something that is a fairly consistent practice. Part of the publishing of the guidance on universal screeners will also be conscious that not all screeners are for all age groups and not all screeners should be administered in the same way. So just making sure that folks have the tools at their disposal to engage in that annual screening process and to be able to communicate what they're learning from that within 30 days to parents, but also internally using their education support teaming processes in order to determine the best course of action or plan for learning for individual students who may need additional support. And I'll pause because I see that Mohammed has his hand raised.
Thank you, Jess, and thank you to your team for all the hard work you've been doing around literacy. Yes, we are struggling, definitely. I see this is very important initiative. I have a feeling that some students may be left out. I don't know whether this is intentional or whether we just didn't think about the incoming students from abroad, some of them, some of whom are refugees or migrants. Here's an example where I work at, at Winescape as an example. We have students that come to us at the age of 17, 18, 19 that had interrupted education as well and placed in, at the high school level just because you want to respect their age and their social, emotional skills as well. So you wouldn't place such individual in third grade or with third graders. Reviewing the policy, they still be at their age range, which definitely makes it hard for teachers who are not prepared for such students. And when I say teachers, I'm going to talk about the mainstream teachers and the ML or ELL teachers without having some strategies in place for these teachers to collaborate and not have this as an option, but something like mandatory. Just to my understanding, when these things come up, when you leave it as optional, some teachers may have some pushback working with ML teachers saying, oh, you're trying to teach me how to teach. I know how to teach. I'm on the floor. I see a lot. I'm not saying all teachers act like that, but it just makes sense for us to come up with a strategy to ensure non-ML-trained teachers have a sense of collaboration with ML teachers to actually be able to serve such students. With that said, the strategy supporting K to three, to me, from what I'm saying, it works, it should work for high school students as well in that sense, with the example I provided you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And, and you're right, and again, this is an overview of the most recent legislation that's passed. It, it doesn't necessarily describe a statewide approach to literacy learning across the lifespan, which I think you're really putting your finger on and thinking about all of the stakeholders. So adult education and literacy providers who are part of our workforce development system also, and frankly, have a significant role to play, particularly for those cyphers life that interrupted formal education, that folks may experience, whether they're coming from countries that have been distressed, when you're talking about multilingual learners, thinking about all of the strategies and resources that we have within a pretty complex ecosystem for education across the lifespan and what might be the best fit. So certainly, I think this issue of how do you provide developmentally appropriate instruction for folks who may have lagging skills, right, is a space that we can support if we can, you know, focus on coordinating our efforts. And what came through in the budget bill that was passed were some changes to the Adult Diploma Program, which might be an area that we'd love to come back and talk with you about. But I think also building into our approach, which is how do we meet and, and sustain and use this new legislation to advance our literacy learning in the state while also understanding that we don't just work with K through three students, right? We work through with pre-K through, you know, 12, 16 plus, right? So I think it's a very legitimate point and it's, it's, it's something that I think we can maybe speak about if we have a broader conversation about the literacy initiative and not a walkthrough of the bill, if that is something of interest to the board. And hopefully that answered your question somewhat, but it's a big question. So I don't want to get a short shrift.
No, thank you for all you mentioned. I really, I just want to make sure we are all working together to ensure as we talk about inclusion and equity in education, not to forget the population I mentioned that is existent in our state here and there. As a matter of fact, at my school in Winescape, I have no idea how many emails I receive out, out of the Children County. People are sending me emails, oh, we have this migrant students, oh, we don't have the resources. I, like asking me what to do with them. I'm not against providing people resources that I know, but at the same time, it's just interesting if people have to reach out to just someone they know, oh, Winescape is out there. They work with multilingual students, so they should be our go-to. Rather than that, I, I'd, I'd rather we have something, some formalized strategy for all. And that goes same way for CTE, career centers. How can they support ML learners who come to them with limited English as well? Because it's very, they, the acceptance of students is very selective. Students from Winescape, as a matter of fact, were rejected, were not admitted for the upcoming school year. It's sad, it's just because they have limited English.
Well, I'd love to, you know, and maybe we can have a, an extended conversation or an offline conversation because we actually have a convening coming up that you might be interested in around this issue and particularly a portrait of an adult learner, right, to, you know, sort of align with our portrait of a graduate, right, and thinking about how do we pull the needle through to make sure that we are meeting the unique needs of learners where they're at while also having some consistency so people see that this is with intention. So would love to continue that, but I also want to make sure that the construction folks can talk about their bill. So maybe we can follow up in email?
I feel to be a part of the conversation, however.
Fantastic, I'll, I'll reach out to you over email.
And Jess, maybe we can provide some follow-up to the board on the array of different programming around literacy across.
Yeah, yeah, and I can drop some, some links too, because we've certainly done some family literary, literacy engagement activities too as a pilot, which have had pretty significant impacts, including students who participated in that program had a 70%, 78% growth in their, their reading using benchmarked assessments. So really, you know, trying to look at how is it that we can have kind of a multi-pronged approach in all of the spaces in which learning happens. So I think, you know, the evidence-based instructional practices, programs and interventions shall be effective. So I covered that. And then SUSDs and independent schools will report the percent of students below proficiency annually to the AOE. And the AOE will issue annual statewide report on proficiency. And I think one of the things we're working on is, and we've heard clearly from the field, is instead of layering another application or another process on top of process on top of process, you know, we've really been investigating how we can build this into existing processes, such as our continuous improvement planning, and also maybe focus on not just reporting those who are below proficiency, but also perhaps reporting on the amount of growth in proficiency attainment in students so that we are taking an asset-based approach in addition to reporting on those students who struggle. Next slide. Each SUSD and independent school is to provide and keep record of professional learning. So for all K through third-grade educators and administrators, this is required. As folks probably are aware, we did launch our, there's a six-module series online, our literacy professional learning series. And really that is kind of a 101 in which it's broken out against different grade bands, K-3 and then four through 12. And we have actually 48 of our SUSDs already participating in that literacy learning modules. But we also know that several systems have engaged in multi-year approaches to professional learning, including folks that, you know, just as a shout out to a board member right now, for Jen's certainly has engaged in, I think, two years of educator-wide professional learning with the Stern Center. We want to make sure that when we're engaging in that professional learning, it includes screening, assessments, interpreting the results in instructional practices and family communications. We have also had a significant participation in SUSDs who have been engaged in over a year-long professional learning that we've been offering statewide around data literacy and developing and implementing high-quality local comprehensive assessment systems. So hoping that we can continue to offer those kinds of opportunities because the take-up has been so high. Additionally, and this is not within my domain, the results-oriented program approval, AOE will make recommendations to the Vermont Standards Board. And certainly you may have an opportunity to hear from Josh and Andrew, who would be responsible for that implementation. Next slide. Lyle, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Jess. The professional development required or optional for school districts?
It's going to be required, however, what's not going to be required, and I think had been maybe an, an initial draft of the bill, is required to complete the PD modules that we had created. But it is required, you'll see that K-3, they're all required to engage in professional learning related to literacy teaching and learning and to maintain records of that professional learning.
Thank you.
Advising staffing in early childhood. So the Advisory Council on Literacy is to meet quarterly through June 2027. They also added some additional board members or specify specific membership. We did receive the, the permanent position at the AOE, which is Emily Lesh's position. So it was a limited service position and now it will become permanent, which I think is a great asset to the agency in extending its reach and opportunity. And then the Department of Libraries is to recommend opportunities for expanding access to early childhood literacy resources. And really the focus is on low-income or underserved parts of the state. Next slide. So the legislative milestones, and again, we're just talking about Act 139 here. In July 1, it takes effect. We're going to be engaged in, as we have been, meeting, we have representation on the council, but we also meet with the council chair in advance of every meeting. On November 1, the AOE will issue recommendations on parental or guardian notifications. Likely that will be a collaborative effort, but maybe led by the Student Support Services Division. By January 15, we're going to issue a report to the governor and the General Assembly with the Communities on Education on the Status of Improving Literacy Outcomes. And really the goal would be to reflect the last several years of effort, you know, as a result of both Act 178, Act 28, and now Act 139. Also, we'll be issuing a report with a list of reviewed screening instruments. I will say that while that is the legislative milestone, we generally tend to try to update our guidance and guidelines in advance of the new academic year. in advance of the new um academic year. So my goal would be that our team is at least issuing an updated list from what we've posted previously to help uh schools as they kick off the new year. Um on January first of twenty twenty-five, approved independent schools receiving public tuition will also have to develop literacy plans. Through our work with the Region One Comprehensive Center, we developed a an implementation guide for system leaders of our state literacy plan, and part of that included a local literacy plan template. We're hoping to use that not only to update our continuous improvement plan template, but also to develop a a template for independent schools. By July first, the AOE will submit recommendations to the Vermont Standards Board on strex- strengthening uh educator prep programs. And there have already been changes that were informed by a report um in a a project that we engaged in in twenty twenty-one with the Region One um Comp Center where we actually did a syllabi review project of our EPPs. And then on July one of twenty twenty-six, we will hope that the recommendations to update uh the educator prep programs will be adopted by the Vermont State Standards Board. So those are the legislative milestones. I think this is the end of our slides. I I just wanted to check back in if there are any, oh, this is the last one. Okay, this is snuck in. So apologies, folks. These are hyperlinked, but just to give you a sense of, you know, Act one thirty-nine is situated within a a policy and regulatory environment that is fairly comprehensive. Our EQS, our Vermont Early Learning Standards, our blueprint, which was published uh late in twenty nineteen, Act one seventy-three, clearly Title sixteen, and then Act one thirty-nine, which modifies Title sixteen, and Act twenty-eight, which came before, are all uh drivers of change. And really, we're trying to situate this within the policy and systems levers of Act one seventy-three with a focus on local comprehensive assessment systems, coordination of curriculum, education support teams, which are really the sort of uh operationalized uh visible uh product of MTSS. And then our our needs-based professional learning, which is really what much of the Act one thirty-nine is centered around. So any questions?
Thanks, Jess. Um it's exciting to see this coming together. Uh but one of the last things you mentioned with respect to MTSS and the integration sort of called for with Act one seventy-three. I know we did here in our EQS were concerned with the uneven implementation of MTSS. We, in the most recent version of EQS, didn't try to prescribe, but called upon it from what's in in the law to put that in the rule. I know that there are many technical links and materials on the very subject at the AOE um website. I just wonder if you and your experience have suggestions for that being one of the strongest levers in in being effective in this work? The more consistent implementation of best practice in that area.
Yeah, absolutely. I I think, you know, if you talk to superintendents and curriculum leaders, I I don't think that they would really disagree. I I think what can happen is, I'm sure you feel it too, is that we we have a a fairly relentless cascade of policy that comes out. And focusing on is trying to make sure that people see how it's knitted together, how instead of it being a collection of book chapters that if you threw it up in the air and then they weren't numbered and you had to put it back together, it'd be kind of a crazy story. But rather to say, here's a, here's a story that we can tell, that we understand how it helps us to have these ethical, equitable, functional, you know, high-quality systems that are feeding each other. I I I can't stress enough, and I think, you know, I'm stating the obvious, but when something like a crisis like COVID happens, it disrupts a system that has impacts that really like it's not over for the system, right? The system is just sort of stabilizing and 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 heroically in many instances. But I think it's about looking at how can that regulatory environment, things like multi-layered systems of support, in which you are, you are making informed decisions about how you select assessments, how you look at data, how that data informs instructional practice in the classroom, teaming decisions at the building level, dis- investment decisions at the systems level, can then impact how you have more coordination of curriculum, right? How you can then align needs-based professional learning based on the data that and what it's telling you versus maybe just sort of a disconnected sort of focus. I think all of that can be a tremendous lever, but I think it takes a sustained focus. You know, very much like improvement science, we we should be looking at what is our seven-year plan to really seed this. And I would just share with folks, just so that it doesn't feel desperate and like we're starting from the beginning. You know, we had twenty-six of our SUSDs engaged in a year-long early warning systems, needs-based professional learning. Forty-two of our SUSDs engaged in math needs-based professional learning. Thirty-five SUSDs engaged in local comprehensive assessment systems, needs-based professional learning and coaching, which is still ongoing. And forty-six, as I stated, SUSDs have engaged in the literacy modules. Forty-six SUSDs have also refined their proficiencies based on our updated um critical proficiency hierarchies, developed portraits of a graduate, and are now participating in performance assessment development. So I think if we can provide those supports, we can get to some coherence and get to some consistency and quality. We're not there. I think everyone would say that. But I think, you know, staying focused on that vision and that implementation and minimizing disruptions to implementation of that vision can go a long way to creating stability and quality.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess, for your work and the work of your team. I do think Emily Lush was able to join us. Emily, you want to say hi as well, being involved in this work?
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. Thanks for your interest and investment in this work.
Absolutely. Um and so as I had mentioned at the top of my report, literacy will be one of our priority focus areas. So we'll continue to provide ongoing updates around this work. And as you can tell, there's a lot of uh there's a really strong foundation upon which we're building as we move forward. So thank you. Uh so thanks to the team for all your work. At this point, um we will be transitioning to highlighting the specifics around the School Construction Task Force, and we have Bob Donahue from our team to walk through the specifics um around this bill. This act.
Okay. Well, good morning, everybody. That that's a hard act to follow, Jess. That was an awesome presentation. So I hope I can keep the ball rolling here. But it's good to talk to all of you again. It's been a while since we last spoke. So Act one forty-nine is uh really dealing with uh the idea and the goal of reinstating some sort of school construction aid program statewide. And so the elements of the bill are really keyed into what has to happen in order to to see that program through. And so one of the one of the major initiatives that's got to happen to make any kind of school district understand what the conditions of their facilities are and what their educational goals are going forward is a master facilities program. And that's an educational facilities program. It's just not taking a look at the facilities infrastructure, but it's also taking a look at the educational services and programming, where you are currently and where you wish to be in the future, and understanding what that those gaps are, and then coming up with a plan to fill those gaps and provide alternatives that then uh the whole supervisory union, school district uh and community can and look through and try and understand what what are the best options going forward. We'll get into more detail in each one of these major elements. The second initiative as part of supporting the the construction program is to pre-qualify architectural and engineering firms who are focused on K through twelve school design and construction and who have experience as well, leading uh a community through the educational master facilities planning exercise, because it's a a time-intensive, community-intensive initiative. And so having a group of or a list of pre-qualified A and E consultants then allows uh awardees of the master facilities grant just the list to go through and and they don't have to go through the work of generating RFPs and determining the uh qualification criteria for these various uh consultants. So it'll be a a great way to fast-track people being able to get with consultants as soon as they they know that they want to start going down the road of developing a facilities master plan. And then the real heart of Act one forty-nine is the creation of the State Aid for Construction Working Group. They have a huge initiative to try and look at at all of the existing um statutes and programming in place that used to be part of the active school construction program, and what do we have to change, modify to it to make it the program we want to have going forward. Next slide, please. So the Master Facilities Grant Program, um even though it's in Act one forty-nine, it remains unfunded for this year, but this is an awesome starting point, because what it's going to allow us to do is to get schools that choose to go down the path of uh doing the master facility grant. It will start building a queue for districts that'll be ready to get into the construction mode once a construction program is put in place. So this is really a key first step for all SUSDs to the the master facilities grant is going to be something where everybody who wants to get state school construction aid is going to have to conduct in one of these initiatives. So this is a wonderful way through this grant program to provide upfront monies to help uh SUSDs. And when I'm talking SUSDs, it's also inclusive of the Career Technical Education Centers as well. And the idea is that there would be a certain amount of money uh available towards a grant for a district that wants to go into the programming uh for the facilities grant. And um we'll come up with a prioritization matrix based upon the facilities assessment that we did the last year. That developed a set of scores that I think we went over roughly when we were talking about the COF update back, but the facilities condition index. And it's basically like a a report card for the school facilities within the SU. And whatever your score is, um is reflective of the condition uh of the school building infrastructure. And what we're going to do is take the average FCI score and add that on to some sort of poverty metric, which is still yet to be determined what that will be. And then between the poverty metric and the FCI score, a school, a supervisory union will have a certain score, a combined score. And that is then going to rank that school or supervisory union uh according to their score. So then it really just becomes a matter of if if you're interested in doing a facilities study, we will know your score. And then depending on what monies are appropriated for the year for grants, we can then allocate uh an award amount based tied to the square footage as a supervisory union. So the larger, the larger your supervisory union, the the more grant award you would get because there's so much more square footage that has to be analyzed in terms of a facilities assessment. Uh next slide, please. There's, like everything else, uh you can either get the the base model or you can get the really super high fancy car. Facility master planning can really be very basic, or it can be very detailed, almost to the level of you're going to pre-construction bonding. So um even though there's a a gamut of options that you could incorporate into your facilities master plan, we're going to be requiring a certain m- minimum that goes into it. And these are some of those uh features. It basically, it's it's understanding where you are from an educational services and programming and facility infrastructure standpoint. Where do you envision going into the future based upon a a study of enrollment, study of demographics? And then do those demographics require different or more services than you currently can provide? And then through that process of where you are, where you need to be, that gap analysis then can inform design about what facility changes need to be done in order to achieve that future goal. And so through going through this process, process, which must be hugely community-intensive, because the whole idea is that you're engaging with the community. Everybody's voice is heard, and that helps inform design decisions as how this how this school district is going to have the various buildings that are part of its educational uh structure. How are they going to be basically modified to meet those future needs? And and through that assessment, usually there are multiple options that are created. And then it's just a matter of deciding which one makes the most sense uh from a variety of perspectives, but cost is always a a huge driver in what the final solution ends up being. Next slide, please. The second, the second one is a relatively easy one for everything uh for this, this aspect of Act one forty-nine is relatively easy to uh achieve. This is basically the AOE is going to be working side by side with the Department of Buildings and General Services. And basically going to work up a s- an RFP, send it out to the AE consultants. Those that come back with a response, we would then, you know, go through a qualification assessment of them, and then we would generate that list. And then when uh the master facility planning grant program gets funded, these lists of AE consultants already be there in school districts and you just, you know, call them up. And even if we had all the money in the world to do a state construction program, we just don't have the depth of architectural and engineering services in the state just yet to to mobilize and do all the work that would be necessary if every school district wanted to engage in all of this. So having these identified ahead of time, having the schools start going down this road is going to be a wonderful way to start building a queue of projects that would be able to get going sooner, once the construction program uh comes to fruition. Next slide, please. Now, the big heart of the matter then is going to be this working group, because they have a huge task before them. It's going to be a legislative working group comprised of three uh House of Representative members, three members from the Senate, the Secretary of Education or a designee. Next slide, please. And they have a a large number of focus areas, and none none of these are easy in and of themselves, but as a whole group, it is a huge undertaking and is going to require a lot of of focused attention, a lot of, lot of data digging and research into various programs that are out there and then figuring out which ones make the best fit for Vermont. So it's going to take a look at governance structure. What 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 will the state construction, school construction uh organization look like? Where will it reside? Will it be within the AOE? Will it be a standalone entity? What will the structure of that and how will it be manned? And who will be overseeing the school school construction? Some states like Massachusetts and Rhode Island have an advisory council that advises the school construction. And so there's an advisory board, and then there's the actual school construction group itself. So there's going to have to be a review of governance structure. There's going to have to be a a prioritization criteria analysis and saying, okay, we know from the facilities assessment that just happened uh all over the past two years, that there's a huge need out in the statewide portfolio of school buildings. How are we going to go about prioritizing which ones do we address first? That in and of itself brings up a lot of discussion points, and um there's a lot of different focus areas and interest areas that people share differently. And so how are we going to come up with that prioritize prioritization criteria is going to be an important element of getting the monies out the door, perhaps to the schools that are most in need right now. The eligibility criteria, there's a lot that goes into that as well. Um and uh they're going to have to take a look at the various things that um are are influential in in terms of um what we were just talking about before with the facilities master planning grant. Just to get in the door to this construction program, you will have had to have conducted a facilities master uh planning grant analysis. And then there's other discussion points that are too too lengthy to go into here, but there was a talk about you know, exclusionary zoning and should towns, should towns have to be looking at their zoning that maybe prevents certain demographics uh from moving into the town because of minimum lot sizes? And these can be exclusive to people to getting into the school district. So there's a lot of things just in the eligibility criteria that will come to bear. Then the whole idea of how much should the state contribute to a construction program? It used to be it was a thirty percent contribution. Other states have a a base rate like that thirty percent, and then they give incentive bonuses, say five percent bonuses, if you adjust certain needs, whether they be ADA accessibility, safety and security, uh consolidation of uh schools and making maximum use of space utilization. So there's a whole, whole nother set of things that have to be considered with that. So there's a whole, whole nother set of things that have to be considered with that. The assurance and certification process, once we invest money from a state perspective into a facility, what's the assurance that there is going to be an annual maintenance budget appropriated to make sure that they're being good stewards of the investment that was just made? And this is going to have to be something that has to seriously be considered. Otherwise, in twenty years, we'll be having the same discussion about how depleted our facility infrastructure is if there isn't appropriate dollars appropriated for the maintenance year on year. And then considerations around addressing environmental hazards and contaminants. This is a big one and we all know what's going on with the PCBs. But what are the other things that are out there that we should be at least thinking about? And how do we incorporate them into a construction program so that we're proactively dealing with them? Kind of as a, as, as an overall philosophical look at it rather than finding out year after year, there's a whole new contaminant that we have to be worried about. And what does it mean in terms of what we just did for an investment in construction? Next slide, please. A topic that keeps being brought up just since we've done the facilities assessment and since it's become public knowledge that there's going to be an investigation in how we can do another school construction program is will we be grandfathering in schools that recently or in some time period before now, five years before now, have already done school construction program? Is there going to be consideration that they get some sort of minimum aid contribution to their project? That's of keen interest to many. That has to be worked out going forward. A review of the current statutes and S V E rules. And I heard that a little bit earlier today, you know, give us a forewarning of what might be impacting the S V E. The S V E has several rule series, the six thousand series that has to do with buildings and sites. The sixty three hundred series, I think, has to do with contractor bidding requirements. And sixty four hundred has to do with another aspect. But there are aspects of the S V E oversight with those rules that will be entangled with the work of this working group going forward. The other thing that we know will be part of the S V E overview or oversight and review is the CAF formula that we talked about just last November, that that capital life financing formula. When we last met and we updated the CAF formula, we were updating the unit costs of construction to get the costs more in line with the current construction sector pricing. There's a whole nother element to that CAF formula that has to deal with the minimum and maximum square footages that are allocated to school service areas, programming areas, and then maximum square footages that limit how much square footage can be built based upon the number of students enrolled in the school. These all have to be reviewed and this is within the state board's purview to do that. Guess the bottom line, the bottom bullet on that last one is kind of the catchall. It's there, the, the, the working group is going to have to be considering most any topic or factor that comes up that they think is somehow related to the construction program going forward. And there are a lot to be considered for sure. Next slide, please. Implementation timeline is very aggressive. The, the working group, the starting working group is an aggressive. But between August first, twenty twenty four and December fifteenth, twenty twenty four, it doesn't leave a lot of time to get all this work done and this is a huge undertaking. So the timeline, if, if, if the working group is convened by August first, it's going to be a lot of background work happen to support the meetings that do happen. On, I think there are six meetings that are at least legislatively scheduled and it can go up to a maximum of ten. It's, it's a lot to get done in that time period. But this is wonderful that if this can happen by the, by the end of the year, then it can at least going forward into the next year, hopefully lead to, you know, the synthesis of some sort of construction program coming together. Any questions?
Hi, Bob. Thank you so much for that presentation. That was really, really helpful. I know that there are a lot of schools that have a lot of work that needs to be done. And, you know, you, you'd sort of alluded to the fact that there's a certain capacity issue with, you know, there are only so many contractors out there. But do you have a sense of, you know, from the time schools start getting these grant awards and, you know, there's going to be a line of schools? Like, how long are we talking before, you know, all of these schools are able to kind of make their way like up to the top of the line to get funding?
Really good question. So the, 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 not that there's a typical master planning grant timeline, but architects and engineers that have already conducted them for the various schools that have gone through the construction process. Now, you're talking anywhere between twelve months and eighteen months for a detailed facilities assessment, master facilities assessment, not just the facilities assessment that we did, but doing that whole educational programming and servicing space and interaction with the community. So even if we get monies next year for planning grants and given that planning, given that the master facilities of plan is the entry into the construction program, we probably wouldn't be seeing anybody unless they were grandfathered in. You wouldn't be seeing anything active for probably two years in terms of starting it. And that, that probably makes sense to me because we still have to come up with a solution for, you know, funding a construction program anyway. And I, I don't know if that would happen in that timeline anyway, right? So, so there's several architectural engineering firms that are already doing this work in the state. And then depending on the size of the grants, the monies appropriated for the grants, that's really going to be the gatekeeper of how many schools can actually get the planning done. And then that queue will be what it is based on that financial resources available to make that happen. Then once the state construction programs pull together, you know, there's, when we, when we talk about the need, the need was identified based on facilities assessment that was done and replacement in kind of the equipment. And none of those initiatives of replacement in kind, even though it quantifies a need, it's not really addressing what we're talking about here about making schools twenty first century modern learning, where the square footage footprint is usually larger because we have now more breakout spaces and these little neighborhood spaces that are all, are all, I guess, moving forward in the educational programming area. These are the needs that have been identified. These spaces are needed. And then when you start to take a look at the demand, the increasing demand of services on the schools, there's more spaces that have to be on one-on-one counseling and, and these little smaller rooms. So it's changing design and layout of schools and that's a lot more money than just refurbishing a school that you already have the existing footprint for. So I think all of it is going to come down to how quickly or how much. It's all tied to the resources available to how quickly things can advance.
So, you know, it'll be probably two years before the first batch of schools, you know, start seeing that money that they can start doing their update. And then there's going to be schools waiting in line behind us. And I mean, this is sounding like this is going to be several, if not more years.
Yeah, I think like, just say roughly, we were in, in our discussions with architects and engineers and with school districts that have already done the, the planning, you know, a plan will cost somewhere in a neighborhood probably of a quarter, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? To go through the facilities master plan. So when you just hear one of those costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, there's going to be some contribution from a grant from the state. What percentage of that total cost is remains to be seen, right? And so the, the award, the grant from the state has to be enough to incentivize a district to be able to do it. Otherwise, they have a lot bigger lift at the local level to, to contribute to that. So I think that all of these considerations are all very important. If we're going to make a substantial and timely inroad to the problem, funding would have to be commensurate with that. But that's, as we know, everything that's going on in the funding area is, you know, it's, it's a lot to consider.
One more question, if I may, and I hope this is not a silly question. Where's the grant money coming from?
Right, yeah, I, I can't answer that. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I know it, it was exciting that the grant was even formulated as a program in Act one forty nine. Now the funding part, I'm sure that'll come from an analysis of how that's going to be coming about. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Then Tammy.
Thanks so much, Bob. I'm sure that the pent up demand is pretty dramatic. It's been a long time since there's been state support for construction aid. So it'll be welcomed by the field, I'm sure. I am wondering how this plays in context with there, there was to have been from Act one seventy six back in twenty twenty two, school closure report from the A O E. I honestly just don't know that I've seen it or that it happened. I'm not sure it was in the law in June of twenty twenty two and expected to have been produced by September of twenty twenty three. So I'm just wondering in the context of that and the vision for education and the use of current facilities and overall governance structure, does that report exist? Has it been done? Is it forthcoming? How will that inform where grant resources will be directed? And that might not be a, a you question, Bob. It might be a Zoe question. I'm not exactly sure. But I don't know if that report ever happened and how it plays into this work.
I cannot speak to that. I do not know if that report ever happened. I'm not sure. I only just joined the last year, so I don't know if the report or any work was, you know, put towards that effort. It's the first time I've heard of the school closure report, so I'd have to defer to somebody else.
We'll have to follow up on that.
Yeah.
Thanks so much, Zoe. It was, it was part of the chapter eleven rewrite that happened that became Act one seventy six. It was eight, seven, something. I don't remember what, seven twenty seven. It was eight, seven, twenty seven back in the session that ended June of twenty twenty two, if that helps. And it was important to the work that was happening when we were trying to help inform. Oliver and I had worked with the House Committee to inform the idea of school withdrawals from unified districts, helping to inform sort of the divorce process. And at the root of the challenges that a lot of schools that were unified, school districts that were unified were having was the concern with closing local schools. And so that became sort of what local communities were holding on to, the fear they were holding on to. And this study was intended to sort of look more broadly at the issue in a dispassionate, somewhat dispassionate way to help inform what standards might inform school closures within a unified district. So we didn't reverse the governance work that had happened and trying to bring not consolidation, but unification of things like curriculum at the highest levels, special ed at the highest levels, being able to absorb changes in enrollment in a more meaningful way, where we were seeing a reversal of that with small districts like Lincoln withdrawing from unified districts and not having the supervisory union support that had been part of their structure before they became a school district, a unified school district. So that was the impetus for the changes in chapter eleven that we helped to inform as a state board of ed at that time. But the House, the full body passed and the governor signed Act one seventy six. And within that was a call for the school closure study. Hopefully, maybe it exists somewhere. I don't remember seeing it. And it was called for in June of twenty twenty two, so.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing that background and also bringing up another point of intersection as we engage in this work. I do appreciate that Bob and the team has been really thoughtful around really trying to connect this to the broader planning and envisioning for education in our state. And he has identified a number of considerations that have gone into that. So just, just commend the team for being really thoughtful around this approach and also calling out that there is some, you know, encouragement around looking at this from a regional view as well. So that multiple S U's can come together and think about that more comprehensively to, to identify those solutions that are going to be best, most beneficial and investments most beneficial from a facility perspective. So we'll, we'll look into that, Kim.
Thank you very much.
And I'll follow up, like, any of the facilities master plans that I have seen and, and experienced, even say in my own district? When it's done well and it engages the community, it really does provide insight to multiple solutions to be considered. And as always, it can become a very polarizing topic, right? Because we're so emotionally entrenched into what we want for our little elementary schools compared to a bus travel to a middle school or a high school. And so if one were to divorce the emotion from many of these, many conclusions might be different because there are, there are kind of pointers in the direction where you might go from a fiscal standpoint and just from an efficiency of maintaining a certain square footage of buildings, while still being able to carry through with the educational goals that you have for the district. It's when you inject that emotional and, and, you know, about local schools and proximity to the schools and the community and the community, how it's a focus for a community. And those are, those are very hard issues to work through.
And I, I think to that point, in terms of framing this within the broader context around the, the state's education vision and goals, it's around how do we create the best learning experience for every student, right? So really putting the student at the forefront of all of these conversations and discussions.
Thank you.
Tammy and then Lyle.
Yeah.
Thanks. Bob, thank you. You are doing such a terrific job. And I had the opportunity to work with you a little bit last fall, but it is so great to have a systematic, thoughtful approach to thinking about a construction aid. And I just, I listened to you talk in your presentations and it's just so refreshing. And, and I'm just so thankful for all the work you're doing. For someone who's has been, you know, embroiled in sort of the finance aspects of this, but also sees how other states do this. I mean, it's just really great to see Bob's leadership on this. One of the things I didn't see in your presentation, and it might be implied, but I just, I just want to sort of zoom out a minute. The district quality standards do have new guidelines around facilities and maintenance and, and things along those lines. And I think the intent was that was to actually to codify some of the things that you're thinking about and talking about here too. So I'm wondering sort of how is the work that you're doing, you know, when you're presenting here? How, how is that lining up with the district quality standards and how the agency is thinking about implementing those standards? And are there things that because of the work that Bob's doing that might inform or maybe we need to rethink or expand or clarify on the district quality standard side so that those two things are working together well? Because the district quality standards were written before Bob. We got pre-Bob and post-Bob, right? And so they were written pre-Bob, right? And I want to make sure that these two things are working together well.
Well, I can, I can assure you they are. That's a, that's a great question, right? Because we just were meeting the other day, I was just meeting with several facilities managers. What we're doing in the operations team with Jill and Courtney, it's, it's going, I think, very well with the D Q S. And so each, each, each area of the D Q S standard is being dealt with by individual parties associated with it. So I'm meeting with a bunch of facilities managers and we're actually going through the rubrics that are going to be used as kind of like the, the measure of, are we proficient? Are we advanced? Do we still need work, right? And they all tie in and key into the initiatives of Act seventy two and what we're doing with the state construction program with Act one forty nine here. So when you take a look at the D Q S standards from a facilities perspective, they're asking the questions, does the S U S D C T E have a five-year capital plan as part of their annual planning budgetarily? Do they have trained facilities managers with, that are certified as facilities managers? Do they have an operations and maintenance manual so that they are actually demonstrating their good stewards of the invested dollars, either of the local taxpayers or of the state in terms of construction? So it's actually interwoven with the initiative of this construction program and the goals of this facilities master plan. They almost work hand in hand with the D Q S standard. Because what we're talking about, when we were talking about assurances and, and making sure that monies invested by the state are taken care of because the school district is appropriating enough money, that's tied into their capital plan. How much money do they need to know? Are they tying it in? Do they have a facilities manager who has, you know, the background, the experience, knowledge, skills and abilities to, to pull together a budget based upon knowledge of the equipment in their facility, right? So all of these things are kind of interwoven because if, if we have the right crew at the school, if, if we have the right crew at the school identifying from an engineering, maintenance and technical perspective, what should we be investing in? And is that being rolled up into a budget? At least those facility managers are doing what they technically know should be getting done. Whether that budget gets approved is something out of their, their, their control, right? But so long as we are doing what we are technically tasked to do, we're doing our job and that's wonderful. And if we have the operations and maintenance manuals in place that the D Q S requires, then we know we're taking care of all the equipment as we ought to be doing. And are we documenting that we're training the custodial maintenance staff in the work that they're doing? Yes. And are we documenting that we're taking care of, uh, and dealing with integrated pest management and toxic chemicals and anything else in the school? Well, yes, that's going to be in the operations and maintenance manual. So it was a great question because it's an easy one to answer. They are all dovetailed together. And the goal is, it sounds wonderful. It's going to be a lot of work, but it's, it's definitely cross-tracking everything together, try and, and make it all work together.
Are there, are there things as you're going through the implementation process, both in terms of the work you're doing in the master planning and now sort of this, right, these, hopefully this new influx of, of funding? I, I mean, are there, are we feeling as if the D Q S, we got it right? Or are there tweaks that need to happen there? And I'm curious, like, this is just sort of occurring to me and, and, and I'm not, feel free to, to, to say you're going to get back to me, um, the secretary, but I'm curious, like, are we keeping a list of things out there that we might want to update with respect to the D Q S? Because as we implement that, you know, best laid plans, right? And as we implement it, I could see where, you know, Bob and his team are sitting down going, well, this isn't quite right, or maybe we need to reconsider this, or maybe we need to add this, like, are we having those conversations? Because the D Q S, I think, is really important and it was a huge step forward, right, for the state, but very rarely do we get these things exactly right on the first track, so.
Right, yeah. I think you're right. I think it, it'll be an iterative process. It'll be a learning process, right? Well, it's, it's always have to be nimble. You have to do your best guess of what we need to be doing going forward. And you, you chart a new course when you find you want to go in a different direction or it's not taking where you want to go. But yeah, I think that it always has to be where you're always looking to improve by one, seeing where you are, seeing where you hope to be, understand the gap and what do we change to get to that new, new position? So I think it's like everything. It's every day is a day at school. We thought we were doing really well. We got a, you know, a B minus and now we're going to shoot for the A. And what do we do to get there? And I think that's all we can do.
Yeah, I, I think that's absolutely right. We, we need to take, um, a continuous improvement approach to this work. And so one of the questions I was going to ask Bob is do we expect all of our, um, S U's and S D's to be proficient in this work? And, and the answer is no, right? I mean, we've been getting that question a lot because we're really designing this in a way to be very rigorous so that we are evaluating the future state of success. Um, and so that's really the lens by which we're approaching this as an opportunity to help raise the bar. Um, so is it a great question?
Yeah. And now, Lyle.
Yeah, thank you for this information. Um, and I don't envy your position over the next six months, by the way, so, um, there's a lot of work to do. Um, the timeline's aggressive, but I think that's really good, quite frankly, because there is a level of urgency. Did I, maybe this is what I thought I wanted to see, but did I see on one of the slides that um, there would be points for higher uh, amounts or incentives to districts if they were looking to share, combine, collaborate together on construction?
Yes, yes, yes. I think that's, uh, I think if, if Supervisor Union A does their facilities analysis and Supervisor Union B did theirs, and the two high schools are a mile apart, but they're just in separate districts, it might be worthwhile to have a more regional focus. Not, not that I'm endorsing that, but it, it, it only from the idea of good sound analysis. When you look at all of the various solutions that could be provided, a regionalization look may be very helpful. Not only from the perspective of invested dollars, but what kind of programming advantage did you get? What, what can we do to the educational space to make it better? If we can combine one larger school that provides the similar kind of programming spaces at a, at a cost point that might be beneficial.
So if a school was going to do a study just for themselves, you or whoever, um, committee might point out, have you talked to your neighbors about what their plans are in the future?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I don't know what level of steering one would be entitled to. I don't know, but it's a valid, valid question, you know, um, because we've been hearing from the field, certain schools say, hey, can we talk to this district about maybe looking at joining forces? And I think conversation's always possible. What happens with the results of the conversation, I guess, is what decision makers have to deal with. But I think that's always wonderful to say, how do we think outside the box? As, as Zoe said earlier, there has to be a paradigm shift in so many areas of education in Vermont. And I think we have to face that it's never going to be what it was. And even though we cling to some things that are emotionally important to us, the reality is the world is changing so dynamically fast in so many areas that we do have to sometimes think outside that box. And if that is collaborating with neighboring S U's, S D's in order to make the best environment for the children, um, and the best solution for the taxpayer, I think all these things have to, i- in, in a typical strong brainstorming session, all ideas are good ideas, you know, and, and you just now have to start to pick away at the why some of them are not attainable for the variety of reasons that might be there. But I think, uh, I think collaboration and a solution is always good.
Thank you.
Board members, any other comments or questions for Bob, for Lindsay, Zoe, Jess? I don't even know if Jess is still here, but, um, any final words on the legislative update? All right, hearing none.
I just want to thank the team. I mean, as you can see, we have really talented individuals at the Agency of Education that have been really involved in this work and being thoughtful and strategic about how we approach these major initiatives. And just want to publicly thank and commend them for their work. So thank you, team.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I mean, this presentation was really, really, um, detailed, helpful, um, informative. So thank you all for putting the time into that, um, and bringing it before the board in a way that I think was, you know, really helpful for us to understand. And Rich, I see you've got your hand raised.
Yeah, is there any way we could have the, um, PowerPoint sent to us? Cause I, I found the, um, the facility thing very interesting and I, I'd love to be able to share that because we've been having many of those discussions at the S U and, and the school district, um, level. And I thought it was, again, a very well-done presentation and um, I did get to work with Tammy at that same group with Bob in the fall and, you know, they do have a lot of hard work ahead of them. And I, I think it's something that we should, as a, as a board and as individuals should support because it is a a major issue in the state.
Yes, we'll share the PowerPoint.
All right. Well, thank you all very much.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right. So at this point, we're actually on schedule, which I think never happens. Um, this brings us to our future meeting planning and I've been keeping a list. Just as a reminder, the current plan is that we are not meeting in July. We are meeting in August. We are planning our monthly meeting and a retreat and I can, you know, fill in on that a little bit. But what I have on my list for August, where did my spreadsheet go? Hang on. Um, well, first of all, we will have a new student member. Um, I have his name. I have not touched base with him. This just came out yesterday or maybe the day before. Um, but we will have a new student member joining us. Um, so we'll do the swearing in for him. Um, possibly, um, an agency presentation on vision for special education. Um, I think we are also looking for, um, an updated annual report from the Special Education Advisory Panel. Um, there may be an update from Otter Valley Unified Union. You may recall at our April meeting, they came before the board of wanting some help with recomposing, um, the membership of their, um, supervisory district. So, you know, we've had some communication with them. They weren't ready to come before the board today. They may not want to come, like, they may settle it out themselves, but, um, I have a little pencil for that, uh, maybe. Um, possibly an update on the D Q S, on quality assurance timeline, as well as a comprehensive overview of the legislative session. So I can tell you that sounds like a pretty busy, um, August meeting. If anyone feels the need for us to, you know, break that into, you know, two smaller bites, we could meet in July, but otherwise I think, you know, we need to plan on a whole day, um, for our August meeting. So I will pause there and see if anyone has any, you know, thoughts on that. Great.
So the new student board member has been, sorry, the new student board member has been selected.
Correct.
Right?
Yes. Uh, his name is Caleb Greenwood. I don't know much more than that. Um, so I will look forward to meeting him and I'm sure like, and I mean, the nice thing too is that our August meeting, um, will all be in person. So it'll be nice for him. Um, unlike Gray, what happened with you, um, he'll get to meet board members pretty early on in his tenure.
Yeah, that's nice.
Rich and then Kim.
I'm sorry, I forgot to lower my hand.
Oh, sorry. Kim.
Thanks, Jennifer. Sorry if I missed it in the beginning. So that full agenda, was that including some, um, sort of annual planning works?
So that's, that's just the, the agenda. That's before we.
The agenda, that's what I was. Okay, so were we, I, I was thinking that I had recalled that the in-person in August was intending to look at a more sus, sort of strategic view of the work for the year?
Right. So that's more the retreat end of things. So, you know, conception is that we'll have our meeting in the morning and then the retreat in the afternoon.
Okay, okay. So that's the first half of the day. The second half will be focused on the retreat work.
Yeah, we'll get to in a second.
So it'll be a full day, but, okay.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I mean, like, I'm looking at that agenda and, you know, maybe some of that stuff can be shifted off to September, but as it stands right now, and that's, you know, two months out, that's a pretty full agenda. So I just want to make a pause or take a pause and just make sure that everyone is okay with, you know, taking the month of July off. Because none of these are, you know, fires that are burning brightly in my world, but it does kind of push off a lot of work to August. Um, so I think if we continue to stick with the plan of not meeting in July, I think we all just need to be prepared for the fact that August twenty first is going to be a busy day. So that, that was kind of my point.
Yeah, uh, Jennifer, do you think that in, in not meeting in July, not, not interested in having more meetings than any of us need to? But if in doing so, we are shortchanging the retreat part of the work?
Um, no, I don't. And so let me kind of shift a little bit and talk about the retreat. Uh, and then the one other thing I will mention, because this is neither board meeting nor retreat, but it kind of will be a fun little thing that we can do between the two activities. Um, so the plan is, um, we are going to be meeting in person at the economic, I'm going to bust this up, the Chamber of Economic Development of Rutland County, is that correct, Lyle?
Or Rutland Region, the hub co-works, yeah.
Rutland Region. Um, so we will be in Rutland. Um, Lyle has graciously offered to host us. Um, so we'll be there for the full day. And then, um, yesterday, when I was reviewing the minutes, Kim, I was reading about the I Bots and I reached out to Lyle and asked if, um, we could perhaps request an I Bots presentation. And so Lyle communicated with the kids and they are all super excited. So they will be, um, we're, we're trying to figure out when, you know, my thought is that maybe this could be between the, you know, the, the, the morning meeting and the beginning of the retreat, but you know, maybe they could come in, um, sometime between those two things. Um, so with the retreat, this is my thought. Um, we have a lot of work that we're doing. We have a lot of work that we need to figure out what we're doing. So we, we, you know, we have sort of our present bucket of work and then I think we are in a good position to start pivoting toward what other things should the state board be doing and what other things should the state board, you know, not be doing and sort of playing two strengths with the agency, who's in the better position to do that? And as we've talked before, a lot of that discussion, I think, is on the one hand, high-level discussion with the agencies to sort of figure out like how we can best support each other, you know, between the two organizations. So that's a conversation that is in the works, but hasn't happened yet. And then as a practical matter, there's also sort of the more detailed, um, consideration of things that needs to happen by the Roles and Responsibilities Committee. So I'm viewing the August retreat, and we can certainly discuss this, but I'm viewing this as a first step in a series of, you know, probably two or three retreats that I would like to have, you know, over the next, you know, several months, year, whatever. Um, to me, it makes sense to start with what are, what do we know? What are we doing? And, you know, really looking to kind of codify that work and create a, you know, manual that can be passed on to future iterations of the board. And so that would be a board discussion of, you know, for instance, I would not put Tom on the spot, but Tom, I would love to have you talk to the board about, um, the twenty-two-hundred approvals committee. Like, how is that committee um, set up? How do you receive your work? What is the work that you do? What is the work that comes out of your committee? How does that go to the board? And to really, you know, look at committing this to a, um, a blueprint. You know, we can talk about, you know, is this working or, you know, what would the committee recommend changing? What would the board recommend changing? You know, discussions on that level so that coming out of the retreat, we can say this is, this is how that twenty-two-hundred approvals committee works. Um, we can codify the fact that we do a lot of our work in committee. And, you know, how that works, um, we have like standard motion practice that, or motion language that I've developed over the, you know, a couple of years that I've been doing this. But really kind of start with looking at what we know that we've all been doing. Um, and then from there, sort of layering in at the next retreat, things that we haven't been doing that we should be doing. And then let's think about like, what does that look like and how are we going to do that? Um, so my guess is that there are going to be rules that we might pass off to the agency. And there are going to be rules that we're going to retain. And so then we're going to have to discuss, you know, who's going to be doing that update work and, you know, coming up with a timeline for that. So to me, it just, it feels like a lot needs to happen. A lot needs to, um, be formalized. And I think it makes sense to kind of start with the things that we are already doing and then layer on as time goes on. We can have these higher level discussions about, you know, what else the board should be doing. I will pause there.
And, um, that sounds like it can be digested in pieces. So, I mean, I, I in theory, I think, could meet in July, but I'm totally fine not meeting in July if we will preserve the space for real sort of concentrated work around at least the first buckets of the retreat work. And I, I would probably add to that sort of codification at whatever time Gray is, um, able to make recommendation around how we establish a network across all student leaders in our schools, um, to help inform the, the state board student leader. It would help us probably as a board to codify how we work with students. Um, and I think that's going a little harder with, with remote, um, meetings. But I think if that playbook is there for how we mentor those student board members and they mentor each other as they move through the system would be amazing as one of our buckets of sort of board handbook, if you will.
Sure. That's a great idea.
I think I remember Jenna and I arriving to like this massive rule for one seventy-three, like a huge tomb set upon our in-person meeting and without any clarity for sort of what our place was in that. And, um, yeah, I think it'll be great to sort of have a little handbook for us for the next, I should say.
Um, I have asked Jenna, um, and Lyle, um, because both of them have far more experience, um, handling retreats, setting them up, um, than I do. I've asked both of them to help, um, Tammy and me think this through. Any other comments or thoughts on August? What that looks like and how we are going to approach our work?
We'll keep it under eighteen hours that day. And we may not use any dots. No blue, no red, no yellow. We'll see.
All right. Anything else?
Just bring it, just bring it, whenever, however.
Just bring it, just bring it, whenever, however. For me, anyway.
All right. All right. Well, if there is nothing further for that, I will turn it to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to be heard. And just looking as a reminder, you can raise your hand by pressing the hand icon or star five if you're calling in. But I'm not seeing anyone with their hand raised. All right. Well, if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Kim, seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. No one wants to stay longer. All right, we stand.
Wish everyone the best for restorative July.
Thank you all.